So, are you ready, Ms. Kelly? Alright, we'll call the meeting to order, it's four thirty. For public information, a copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of this meeting room on the east wall, if anyone needs to see that or read that. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper? Meyer? Rising?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Alright, if we'll stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say welcome to everyone that's here this evening. I want to remind all that this meeting is being recorded, and to that, it will be broadcast at a later date. And so, remember that whoever would like to speak this evening, be sure and come forward when you are recognized. We need you to state your name for the record and spell your name, which assists the county clerk in being able to put her minutes together. Remember, there'd be no swearing or no other inappropriate language. All of us need to check our cell phones, as Ms. Kelly always reminds me, to try and shut them off or turn them to silent if you can. Want to remind also the commissioners that we need to lean forward and speak directly into our microphones the best we can, so that whatever is being said can be heard, especially for the recording later. We'll see how long the meeting is going, but if I feel it's appropriate, we may take a short eight-minute recess in the middle of the meeting, simply to give everyone a short break. I do want to mention this evening that we have both Mr. Phil Kelly and Jason Ocean from the Douglas Kelly Law Office. I do want to recognize Mr. Kelly, although he hasn't been with us for a real long time, because we just decided to bring their firm on to help us with our civil matters, but this intends to be for Mr. Kelly's last evening with us. And we certainly appreciate what he's done for us so far, and we're gonna miss him, but look forward to working with Jason. But we certainly want to wish you the best in somewhat semi-retirement, I understand.
Well, I'm just evolving towards semi-retirement.
Okay.
Thank you for your coming, and I'll miss you all, but maybe not miss being here at the meeting.
Sure. Well, we appreciate all you've done for us, so... Alright. So, the first item that we have is the approval of the agenda and consider any modifications. Kelly, do you have any changes?
I don't have any changes.
Okay. So, anyone else, any commissioners have anything?
Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote. Do you have everyone voting, Ms. Kelly?
Yeah, she's just feeling awful.
You have four yeses.
Alright, so the motions carried for the agenda to be passed as presented. Also, I'd like to mention at this time, the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. We do have an executive session towards the end of the business this evening, and so we will be going into an executive session, assuming that that's approved this evening. But this also just reminds us that if for some reason during the meeting that we feel there's a point where we need to go into a closed session, we would do so with our attorney's blessing, so to speak. So, the next item on the list is the consent agenda. There's several items listed there. The intention is for these items to be voted on as one item and be approved unless any of the commissioners would like to consider any of these items separately. I'd ask tonight if there's anything that needs to be considered separate, or should we... I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda if we don't hear.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. I would, hearing no other discussion, suggest we vote.
You have four yeses.
So, we have... We'll approve the motion with a four-o vote. So, the consent agenda has been approved. The next item are building and zoning items. The first item is a public hearing at four thirty to discuss and consider approval of the Dave Luce zoning change request, rural residential to agricultural located in section thirty-one, township twenty-three north, range fifty-two west. This is a public hearing, and I'll officially open the public hearing, but more importantly, we're gonna let Bill speak first and let him go over the project and what he needs to tell us.
Sure. So, this is located on the Spring Creek Road and in between Sunflower Road, Cookwell Road, just east of Mitchell, and it's in the H and M subdivision. So, this picture right here, this basically shows there's two separate lots. This one's called Lot B and this is called ditch Lot C. So, in the request, he wants both of them in there to be removed out of the rural residential zoning, which then in the end would be removed from the H and M subdivision altogether and then be consolidated with this field right here. So, what you have is two point one acres total, the strip itself's a half an acre, and then the actual lot B here is one point six acres. Then you can see the other lots. At one point, these were all a bunch of separate lots, but they merged them back in nineteen five and created Lot A and Lot B, because the lots were just too small for trying to get the septic system and the wells, the distances, to separate those. So, and here's the old nineteen seventy-six one, you can see it actually had the original lots here, and the little ditch Lot C was an easement from the Enterprise Ditch Company, where they ended up abandoning that and just turning that into that ditch lots. So, the planning commission did hear testimony at its December tenth meeting from the neighboring property owners who objected to the zoning change request, and the planning commission agreed that the approval of such requests could negatively impact the adjacent lots and create a conflict with the residential uses. The planning commission made its recommendation to not approve the zoning change by a five to two vote. Here's a picture that was provided by one of the neighboring property owners showing at one point, see there was some cattle running up on that vacant lot there, calves were getting down on the road, but they were up against the two other neighboring lots. So, that's what we have so far, if you want to make a comment.
So, this is a public hearing, and I would ask, first of all, if there's anyone here this evening that would be in opposition or would prefer that we did not approve the request, if you are here for that reason, if you'd come forward and give us your testimony. And if anyone is here this evening in favor of us approving this, then come forward, and Mr. Luce? And I might comment just briefly, and that's that you were here during tax protest time, and you were protesting the value of these lots, and I believe we all asked you to contact Bill Maven and suggested that possibly if it could be annexed onto your agricultural property, that from a tax standpoint, it would be better for you. But anyway, tell us about your thoughts, and then we'll go from there.
Cows won't be there. The guy refused to pay the property damages, and I turned it all back into hay anyway. I won't be stacking hay down there, because I lost a similar load of hay down there one year. I put all my hay back up by the house. The lots were basically given to me when my folks died, and nobody has ever wanted to buy them. No one's ever come down to the house even propositioned me about buying them. That's when you raised the taxes on them. I came to see you and asked the why, and you sent me the bill. That's why I wanted to merge it back into the ranch. As far as, it's just weeds and dirt. I guess planting a little grass down there, maybe that'll make them happy. I guess Russ?
You said, nobody's ever asked you to buy them? You've never had a...
No one's ever come down to the house and asked.
That was my... I was thinking if they don't want to have you tie it back to the farm, why wouldn't somebody there buy that and make a lot out of it, invest in it, or do something with it?
I guess they just didn't want it. They say it's a nice word, but yet they don't... I've just let the weeds grow. And I went in there one year as a swaster and cut it all down, and they said, "What'd you do that for?" So, you can't please them.
So, do I see it then, Bill, as there's one residential lot to the south?
Yeah.
And one larger one up towards the north?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
He's got cows.
Just what's in the yellow box, right?
That is what Dave owns right here.
Right, just what's inside the yellow circle.
This is a separate one, and this is a separate residence.
Now, just the one north that, he doesn't own the one that's out of that yellow box.
He owns from all of this here down, so that would've been that Lot A.
He owns that now? And this is actually separating that?
No, he...
Not Dave.
So, see this Lot A? That's what that guy owns.
Okay, okay.
Dave's got this, and then the ditch Lot C. That's all he is right in that area.
He sent me the bill to have it annexed back onto the ranch, and that's why I'm here the second time.
When we were looking at this issue at tax time, it seemed to make sense that it could be annexed to your ag property, and it would certainly help you from a tax assessment.
It went from ten thousand to fifty-two thousand.
Right. But then, I'm understanding that when the planning commission met on this, then there was several people here in opposition, and the planning commission voted five to two to not approve the request, and...
There was a lot of worry, and they brought up...
They brought up stuff that...
Mice coming out of the haystack, so apparently some of the cattle had gotten loose through the time that Dave was renting that out.
It isn't gonna stop that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there was just...
The lady was talking...
They were worried about the road getting impacted by the big trucks. That was just some of the things.
I couldn't see one thing in there that justified not doing it.
Now, is that gentleman north here, does he have livestock?
Yes, he does.
Cattle?
Yep.
How many head?
I don't know.
They're limited in that zoning, that residential zoning.
Right across from him, he's got horses. All my horses are back down at the house, mile away. As you can see, I replanted that hayfield back to hay, so there won't be any animals on there. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks.
Dave, David, one more question would be, would you be opposed to selling that if somebody made you an offer?
I'd sell it. But I've been there thirty-four years, and no one has stopped by. They like to drive across the way, so don't stop by.
Okay. Anyone else that's here for the public hearing? You are?
I'm not good at public speaking, I was coming out opposed.
Okay. Well, if you want to speak, you're gonna have to come up here and tell us who you are, and... Okay?
I apologize.
And we can record that you're opposed.
I'm not good at speaking in front of people, so I apologize.
That's alright.
So, I'm the one that is north of that property. I'm Daniel Romisch. I own the property just north of that, that you were talking about.
And spell your name, Daniel, for the clerk.
R-O-M-I-S-C-H.
Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, go ahead. You live north?
Correct, and I do have a couple cattle. I have forehead and a calf, then the calf is leaving as soon as it's off its maw. I make sure I have three or four max at all times, because I know I'm not allowed very many, just a hobby. And that was, for me, was one of the things, was the cattle when they were rented there, and if it ever did happen, but I do know, like, my neighbor, who's would be just up the, all the way at the end of the road there also, on the east side of the road, I guess there, yeah, that one. I know he would be here, but they had a death in the family, and so they're gone. They had to go out of town for that, but there's... I've never seen any horses up there, I don't know where that... He has chickens and turkeys and a couple little bitty goats, like little miniature goats or whatever, but I don't know about the horses up there, unless they're up above the canal, but I don't know about that. I know a big thing, a lot of the neighbors that were with me last time, and I've thought about it since that other meeting, because I was here at that other one also, was how close the wells are, and if it became agricultural land, if there's no kind of restrictions on what could be put in the ground as far as the difference between agricultural and the way it's zoned now, it could affect our wells, like with the aquifer under there and everything. And I would be willing to buy it if he wanted to sell it. I never knew he wanted to sell it.
How's your chance?
Like I said, I would be very interested. I know my neighbor's told me that he's talked with his lawyers a couple of times to try and get an offer to him. I don't know if there was a miscommunication somewhere that is between them, not me, I just was saying. I know there are people that are in that, that live in that neighborhood that would be willing to buy it from him if he wanted to sell it. But...
Are you serious about purchasing that farm?
I would be very interested in purchasing it.
Why don't we table this for thirty days and let him buy it?
If he's willing to sell it, I would be super interested in trying to buy it.
Alright. Alright.
Alright, I'm gonna make out a motion.
Well, we're not ready for a motion.
We're not ready.
We're still in the public hearing, and... Alright, so, I think we understand your position, and that you're here to speak in opposition.
Correct, and like I said, I'm not good at speaking in front of people.
You did just fine. And you did, yeah. So, that tells us your thought, and you also are letting us know that you may have an interest in buying the property, so... Alright, we appreciate that. So, I was just getting ready earlier to close the public hearing. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak on this item? Alright, let the record show there were none, and I'm gonna officially close the public hearing, and we'll go to discussion amongst ourselves here. So, Russ is of the thought of possibly tabling this and not taking action on it for possibly thirty days or so, with the thought that they could maybe come together and let the property be purchased. Do you guys see any problem with that?
We all agree with you.
You might go sixty days, because you know how long it takes to actually get a purchase agreement put together.
Right.
That's true.
I mean, if you could get a purchase agreement put together, I don't see any reason why we couldn't just pull this off and then leave it as is. I think that's the ideal situation, to leave it as is.
That'll solve David's problem, because otherwise it just never ends, his taxes will never catch up with the value.
And I think you want to kind of keep that subdivision together the way it is, already been so long.
So, the thought would be possibly tabling it to the first meeting in March? That'd be about sixty days?
I would think you'd be able to get a purchase agreement, or something thrown together contractually by then. Be decent work, have it done in a couple of days.
If they can agree on a price.
We haven't quite got a handshake yet, so we're getting closer.
Okay. Well, I wouldn't be opposed to that idea.
Are you thinking, are you thinking that you wanted to not take their advice and approve it?
I do.
Okay, that's...
I definitely, right, at this point, well, this is a whole different twist than what was probably presented at that meeting.
I just wanted to understand from my...
So, with that, we wouldn't have to really even take action on the item. Actually, we would, we would vote at the, at the end, we would vote to not approve it as recommended, because it wouldn't need to be, it wouldn't need to be turned into agricultural if he's gonna buy it. Withdraw?
If he has the contract, he can withdraw his application.
Yeah.
Then we wouldn't have anything.
Then you just table the motion for the time being, and then if it falls through, we can come back and address it at that point.
Table this item.
Right.
And you'll be in charge of putting it back on?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, I would only suggest for Russ to maybe motion to table this item till the first meeting in March.
Yeah, it does, actually.
I'll just make one suggestion. If you do end up purchasing this, you'll want to combine that lot with your lot. You'll get a tax break for the economies of scale there for a square foot and that kind of stuff, so...
There's a second option on that, Charlie, sorry to interrupt. So, what they could do is just sell Lot B, one point six acres, and then Dave just retain that strip up there, and then he could actually merge just that back with the farm. Otherwise, I mean, it's sort of useless to have a twenty-foot strip.
But he's gonna have to have a different survey, or will he? That's all, has that been surveyed out?
That's two separate lots, yep.
Okay, so, okay.
So, you could actually purchase it separately or work together. If he wants, well, maybe he wants that strip, you know?
So, we would just change the wording or the legal on that?
Right. Yeah, maybe Daniel wants that strip, because it goes up all the way to his lot anyway, so, I mean, but that's whatever you guys can figure that out.
Give him a good alleyway.
But if you do end up with more property by the end of this, you'll want, you'll want to work with the assessor and the register of deeds to get those lots combined, save you some money on your taxes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this until the first of March, first meeting in March.
I'll second.
And see if we get a purchase put together.
Yeah. So, we have a motion to table this item and for it to be brought back the first meeting in March, and we have a second to that. Any other discussion? Alright. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
Alright, so the motion's carried, and it'll be tabled till the first meeting in March. Alright. Thank you, guys.
Good luck, guys.
Be sure you get together and try and make this happen as soon as you can. Alright? Alright, thanks so much. Alright, the next item is a public hearing for four thirty to discuss and consider approval of amendments to the Scottsburg County zoning regulations, more specifically, the implementation of the wind energy generation regulations for wind energy conservation systems. I will say this is a public hearing, and I'll officially open the public hearing at this point, but we'll go to Bill and/or Phil on this item, and whoever wants to make a presentation as to our new possible regulations.
So, this is the conditional use list in ag zoning. We already did this for the solar, we had, we just changed what it was before as item fifteen, so now we're gonna add item twenty-seven here for the wind energy generation facilities, so, I'll just, that section needs to be changed. And there is one exception in the regulations that we'll touch upon, but we do allow for wind-driven electric generators in rural residential district, that's just like a little single, little household one. And I'll just go ahead and let Phil take over here.
So, we did solar energy a few months ago, and to start on this project for grant, I simply instructed my assistant to everywhere you see solar, change to wind. And so, the document is a mirror of what you did for solar energy, except for the public specifics possibly point out. On the first page, we've got three classes likely for solar. One is a small capacity generator that does not require a permit, that'd be in somebody's backyard with a small, small wind generation blade system, or it could be for a central pivot, or it could be for a well, it could be for your business, but it's a one-off proper use and not requiring permits for that, just like we did require solar permits for a single-family usage, like on your roof or something like that. The second class is a commercial wind energy, and that is the same concept about a number of property owners getting together and having a little larger system that would serve as a number of houses in a neighborhood or in a homeowners association or something like that, or the same thing for commercial use, where there's a commercial area that wants to take advantage of the generating wind energy, and so this does require a permit. And then the third class is utility scale, be a large wind farm out in the rural area with multiple generators, and that is also going to require a permit. So, the format's the same as far as three classes and going from a small use, no permit, to the commercial, and then to the utility level. Going on, the changes that we made are on page two in definitions, we've added a couple of definitions. One is accessory wind energy system, we defined that, and then on the next page, we have some definitions of the fall zone, so that's important with reference to setback requirements. Then down to hub height and total height system, because we connect up the setback requirements to the height. We don't describe, you'll see later that we don't subscribe so many feet, we say one and a half times the total height of the tower, because there could be a variety of heights, depending on how big a system is, or how big a unit is, how big the blades are, and that sort of thing. We, going on down rotor diameter, that is, and shadow flicker... We, going on down rotor diameters, that is, and shadow flicker are things we'll talk about in a few sections. Um, later on with reference to those issues. The idea of shadow flicker is that if you get the sun, a rising sun, that happens to be between the wind generator and your house, you'll get a strobe effect on your house or a flicker. So, we have defined what that can be, how long it can occur, and how much, how much time during a year it can occur. Um, the sun comes up in a different spot every day. So, if your house is directly between the rising sun or the setting sun and a generator, there could be a flicker on your house. We say there's a limit on how much that can be, how much time that can be per day and that's with it. And then the, uh, next, next page is a wind turbine generator. We simply put a definition on that one there. So, those are changes in definition. Then the next item we go to is general site design standards. What we haven't read are changes, our new language for setback requirements. So, we have from electrical transmission lines, a distance of one and a half times the total height.
One two five.
One point two five, the total height, um, from transmission line. So, if the thing falls over, you're gonna miss the transmission line. That's the goal. It gets knocked over. Then from participating properties, no setback is required between adjacent properties participating in the same project. Except no tower shall be closer than one point two five times the total height from a building or structure. So, two property owners who share a boundary, there's no setback between the property line. From the property line if they're both participating in the property. Um, but if there's a building, we want, we don't want to drop a tower on top of a building or structure. From non-participating property owners. So, this is, um, uh, neighbor who's not participating in the, uh, wind farm project, it's one and a quarter times the total height from, from that property line. So, it won't fall across the property line or across the fence lines or whatever. The non-participating existing dwellings, we have a setback of a half mile or two and a half times whichever is greater than the total height of any dwelling. And, uh, that would be non-participating existing dwellings. So, the neighbor who has a house, they have to be a half a mile away from that house. Now, that could be a, a radius of a circle, it's a half mile. Depending on where the house is located, not for an entire mile, then it's a one and a half times. It'd just be from the house to the, uh, project property. Questions on those things?
So, one concern I would have is, uh, the distance from the public road. Sounds like it could be closer than these other distances of one point two five times the total height. And the reason we're going with that one point two five times the total height is so that the, uh, tower does not fall on a building or transmission line, um, or onto a non-participating property.
So, Charlie, the non-participating property would also apply to that because they don't own that. That's the county road. So, it would also be one point two five. The reason that we had the three hundred was the snowdrift effect. We also had the same thing for the solar. So, they couldn't put it closer than the one point two five to the county road. It all depends on the height of the tower.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the tower's not gonna fall on camera.
Right, yeah. That's, that's just the same as being a neighbor's fence line. If we are a county road right away, it would be the same.
Why wouldn't we put the one point two five instead of the three hundred? We don't know if these towers really is gonna be three hundred feet tall, three hundred feet six hundred feet.
Well, then, then your setback's gonna be one point two five times six hundred feet.
Well, it's saying three, what's the three hundred feet in here?
That was the snowdrift effect. That was, we didn't want to have that. It was a DOT thing, uh, where they didn't want to have too close, then the snow drifts across the county road. But in essence, we're accomplishing the same thing with the from non-participating property. The county owns the property, that's a right away, so that one point two five still.
I understand, I heard you say that.
You could have a shorter tower. That the one point two five would be less than two hundred.
So, you.
So, we've covered it, well, three hundred stops minimum.
Correct.
Right. It would be the.
It's gonna be one point two five or three hundred feet whichever is greater.
It'd be nice if we had it worded that way.
Well.
It's almost worded that way.
It, I understa- I understand it. The, the public road is covered underneath the section labeled from a public road and also from a non-participating property. The non-participate, county road is a non-participating property.
That's correct.
And, and Bill's gonna make sure that the application is gonna satisfy that setback requirement.
I mean, we definitely could add it in there and say your one point two five or whatever is greater.
I think that would be nice to include it.
Just using the same wording as we used on the other ones. Can you just add that to it?
Sure, sure.
Just to make sure.
Let's add that up.
So, uh, the motion approval would be as amended.
We will attend right.
Okay.
So, do, do these distances then account for shadow flicker?
Shadow flicker is different.
Is it, is it later?
Forgot it. It's not a distance issue at all. We'll talk about that when we get to the public that section. So, on the top of page five, we've got distances from state and national parks, which is two miles. And from historical sites that's defined in this gospel, trying to talk me to plan. And Bill will show you that. There's some language in that plan. It talks about development within close to those historical sites that are not state parks nor federal parks. Right there. So, in the last paragraph, if I recall it, the county needs to preserve historical sites among these areas that will be preserved as, as, uh, Rubidu Pass and Ochrs Creek. So, we're saying two miles away from those areas because of their comprehensive.
In the Scottsburg National Monument.
So, that's why that language is in there because they're not, as I said, they're not state or national parks. But you have determined they should be preserved.
We determine that in our comprehensive plan.
Correct. Essentially, it's, it's, they're saying the same thing on page sixty-seven too, just to ensure the high quality scenic, you know, historically significant sites are aesthetically protected. So, we have a few pages where it references protecting those areas.
Okay, then, as we go back to page five, the rest of the language is identical to what we had in solar except for paragraph ten. That's where we're gonna talk about noise. Noise produced by the, by the generator cannot exceed fifty decimals as measured at the closest dwelling unit. There could be an exception during short, short-term events such as utility outages or s- utility outages or severe wind storms. Now, Bill did a great job in researching that information and I sent this out to you, but here's a summary of samples from commercial wind energies, energy, uh, situations in various counties in Nebraska. And the standard appears to be fifty decimals away from the residence in all of the counties that, virtually all of the counties.
So, what is a normal setback for fifty decimals? There's gotta be a number here because you can't build it and say, oh, you went over.
Well, they have to have the engineer come up with a formula for how far that's gotta be depending on where they're located. And we don't know how many people be.
Well, if you have a combination of those units running, you know, further closer you can, you can, you're gonna double that.
But it'll be measured at the dwelling unit.
Yes.
And so, what happens if they exceed fifty decimals then?
Okay, and they can exceed fifty decimals if there's high wind situation or an energy shortage situation. They can crank those things up for a short period of time. That's what this standard says. Now, I, I hope you understand your question. What if it exceeds fifty decimals?
Okay, so let's say they put it up there just on a normal one and eight. It's in sixty-five decimals.
It'll be a violation and they're gonna have to take it down.
So, it should be engineered now.
Do you want a distance in?
Here, here's what it shows on here, um, on some of the engineering stuff we found. Uh, it keeps the level below forty-five decimals at one thousand feet. So, we have a, a half mile to the non-participating properties. So, that's double that. I should cut that number in half. So, you're forty-five at one thousand. If you're at two thousand feet or essentially you're twenty-six hundred for your half mile, you should be even well below that. That's the engineering numbers.
Well, I said, okay, for, for, at least you have something there. We can look at it and, and see.
As I said, Bill did a great job researching these issues and finding it. And I did some other research about, it depend upon, um, which Google sites you clicked on. If you clicked on the mini-energy site, oh, it's no problem at all. If you clicked on the, the landowner site, it's a huge problem. And so, um, the standard seems to be fifty decimals measured at the residence. And it could, you know, it could be affected by topography. Is it up at the top of the hill or in the valley? Where's the house? So, they're gonna have to sort that out. They're gonna have to figure that out. Show proof in the application that they're no closer than they can be for fifty decimals.
I'm sure by now they know what that range is for each unit. They've already done the testing on it and everything, so they're, they're gonna know.
Yeah, they, somebody.
Yeah, they're gonna know.
Okay, the next, are we, can we go off, can we go on?
Mm.
Next item is twelve. And that's the shadow flicker. We didn't put it in red. We should, this, it's red later on, but the, the, the shadow flicker produces features of, of the proposed wind turbines at the proposed site. And so, there's gonna be a detailed description in the application of the potential s- shadow flicker producing features. And they'll have to do calculations and have information about how they calculated the potential for shadow flicker at a residence. Not just a structure, but at a residence. And it'll be from each proposed wind turbine at their proposed site. And they have to be based upon national climate data sources. And shadow flicker, that phenomenon we discussed is, uh, not exceed thirty minutes per day. So, that'd be, you know, if you get sunrise, it could be thirty minutes, or sunset, probably wouldn't have shadow flicker on the same day. Or thirty hours per year. And this again is the standard that we found in our research about what other, what other regulations are providing for, for the shadow flicker.
But we're thinking at a half a mile setback distance, you can minimize that amount of shadow flicker. Then you can, you have to come in at a steep angle to, to even get to thirty.
We want it that the sun's at the lowest point.
Yeah, a- at a half a mile way.
Right.
Okay. Then, going on, this is the utility energy system. And again, we used basically the same setback requirements, um, going down here. We're out there. We used basically the same setback requirements for both the commercial and the utility.
So, we'll just go ahead and put that same language here also from the public road.
Mm.
So, it'll be on page six also, page four, page six.
So, any questions about those setbacks?
Did we have the two miles on the last one too? Is it also two?
Yes. Then on the next page, there's, there's a lot of red here, but it's not, there's no difference I believe. The difference is.
Uh, you said this, the structural codes in the American Clean Power Neutral Color.
Yes, I think that was the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Section.
Yeah, I think they just, uh, they just didn't highlight it all up there. Whatever, I think, yeah, these are all the same as we had in class two.
So, the wind noise, the, the noise is still fifty decimals. Shadow flicker is still the same criteria. And then, I believe that, this is your application requirements, that the rest of the document is identical to the solar. And, and so, we're looking at the same language for wind in this regulation as you had in solar that you approved a couple of months ago. So, these strict requirements about having the public hearing, uh, and what's gotta be in the application. Compliance with game parks, FAA, military, all that, um, designing, the information that we want, the disclosure about, about, uh, who is negotiating leases and who's negotiating agreements with, with, uh, industrial electric companies who are gonna buy the energy. All that language is, is the same as we have in solar. The, uh, decommissioning language is identical. The safety measures, the coordinating with fire departments, the emergency operation plans are all identical to the solar. Your final approval before they, Bill would issue Bill a permit, final approval. So, you get a chance to have one last look is identical to the solar.
Back on forty-three thirteen again, Phil.
Yes.
I'm still gonna complain about, uh, the county taking a check or any kind of payable to the county for decommissioning. I don't really wanna see the county responsible for any decommission. My opinion.
Uh, this is identical to what we did with the solar.
Then we did it wrong. Then we're gonna look at that one.
Okay. Uh, so this is a bond to the county. So that if the county has to pay for any decommissioning because the project owner does not, then we'll have money to do that. The landlord is also gonna have a bond because he'll want his property to be commissioned. So, it's gonna be a bond in favor of the landlord, I anticipate. Uh, that's what my research showed. And there'll be a bond in favor of the county. So, the project owners are responsible because of our regulations. Project owners are responsible to the landlord, I'm sure, on to their lease, which you're gonna see to make sure they decommission properly. So, I, I think that, um, this language is the language we're seeing in the other regulations for decommissioning.
I see that, but I, it gets the county into a position where we're gonna need to hire a contractor. If it comes up short, it looks like the county gets to make up the difference the way this is.
Well, that, our protection is that they must have an engineer's estimate. The cost of decommissioning is in here. And every five years they must update it and they'll be doing a new bond every year.
Every year or every five years?
Well, the amount of the bond will be modified every five years. If the engineer comes back and says it's gonna cost another five hundred thousand dollars to decommission because of increasing expenses, then the bond is gonna go up and that's reviewed every five years. I've talked to bond companies and they say generally a bond is issued for a year at a time. And the amount would be in that bond. And, and so, um, I'm not, I'm not tuned in to your concern, but the bottom line is that. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll, I'll state my concern, I guess. So, my concern is that, you know, if we get to, if we, if we have the look-in at five years and, and the engineering firm says, okay, it's gonna cost, you know, two point one million dollars to decommission this thing. And then, um, three years later, we haven't had a look-in yet, but the cost is increased by three hundred thousand dollars. Well, then, the county would be on the hook for that extra three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, there's a couple of comments ahead. Well, there's a couple of comments ahead, one is the property owner's on the hook, the property owner's up on the hook initially, so the developer's on the hook, the property owner's on the hook, because it's his land, and the county gets involved if you decide as a board that we have a problem out here with storage of blades on this property, and we wanna do something about it, um, so, I understand your thoughts and concerns, so, potentially, we'll, we'll make sure that the bond has, has,
I, you know, can you.
Some language in it to not be limited to a dollar bond, I don't know, I don't know, but.
Can, can you actually double bond the same job this way, because, uh, one bond usually supersedes the other and feeds off the other, no different than having a life insurance policy, you can't have two life insurance policies on the same person.
Sure you can.
The only thing you can.
Sure you can, huh?
Yeah, you can have.
You bet, yeah, you can, I don't know of any reason why you can't have a bond in favor, uh, the property owner can have a bond in favor of me, the county can have a bond in favor of the county, absolutely, 'cause I've got, had three life insurance policies on me at one time.
Really?
Everybody was hoping.
I can find out about it.
No, but, but you can't, because I bought them, I'm the owner of the policy.
Health insurance, I think, maybe there's some validity to what you're saying, but not life insurance, I mean, you could have ten policies.
But you can't, here's the difference, you can't buy life insurance on me, because you don't have an insurable interest.
Right.
So, so we, that's not the problem, there could be two bonds, because, because the landlord has an issue to protect, one is, he doesn't want the county coming at him and saying, and that's, that's another remedy you have, you could declare a nuisance on the property owner if it's not cleaned up, even after all this is done, because you don't let him have a, a garbage dump. You have a nuisance authority under the state statute to declare the property a public nuisance, and you can get the property owner to pay to abate the nuisance. So there's additional protection there, so, I, I'm satisfied legally that we've done a good job. I know that if you want an absolute a hundred percent guarantee, I can't give you one.
I'm not asking for a hundred percent guarantee, I'm just asking that the county not be part of the cleanup.
Well, the, the bonding company is gonna pay for the cleanup, so that they don't have to give money to the county. And if the, if that cleanup doesn't get done, you make a claim against the bond, and you hire the contractor to go clean it up, and you use the bond money.
And then when you run short.
Well, I, I, the landlord's gonna pay it, because you're gonna get, come after it for a nuisance. So, I can't give you an ironclad hundred percent guarantee that all the problems will be solved, but I can give you a legal opinion that this document, um, goes as, goes to solve the problem the best way we can.
And we're saying protect the county, and technically what we're doing is protecting the, uh, landowners around, we're trying to protect the landowners around.
That's what we're trying to do.
And my only, I realize that, um, um, that we don't want to say, well, the money's gonna go to the county, therefore the county's liable, what we're saying, or what I think Phil is saying, the landlord and or project people are gonna have the first responsibility, and I guess, the thought that, that money from another bond, a second bond, would actually go to the county and or the bond company is gonna try and get it cleaned up before any money goes to the county.
So I, I, I've seen, I think you've seen, to the extent that it's very rare that claims are made on bonds, but the bond company goes in, they try to find the most cost efficient way to solve the problem, they do that. And if they solve the problem, they pay for it based upon the bond, and then if they don't satisfy you, you go back and say to them, you didn't do a good job, finish this up, and, so.
I think, I, I understand.
Oh, one other comment, I, in this regulation, any engineer's estimate provided by the developer is subject to review by an engineer hired by the county. So, to look back, they come in and say it's two million dollars, you can hire an engineer at the developer's cost, it's in the regulation, to determine whether that estimate is valid, so you have protection that way.
I don't see anybody wanting to chase this thing after, but leave this room, I think it's gonna be over for forty years, when, when everything falls apart, that's when it'll be done.
Well, every five years, and hopefully it's gonna be reviewed.
Well, it shall be reviewed every five years, that's a good job, we're gonna have the calendar.
It's compelled, we even have it like, it'd go into the judicial uses that we've given during the, essentially, when you approve permit, that would be one of the items in the statements, that's what you have to do, and I think we even have a certain amount of time, they had to get that done, I think.
Well, I think there's some overlapping protection in the regulation.
So I think the explanation you've given satisfies me, just to kind of explain how I got concerned, is the language says, such financial security shall be payable to Scotts Bluff County, and shall be updated every five years to cover the costs associated with updating, with the updated decommissioned cost estimates, so when I, when I read, such financial security shall be payable to Scotts Bluff County, that makes me think that they're gonna cash the bond, they're gonna put two million dollars in our bank account, and we've gotta go out and make sure this.
Hire a contractor.
That's, that's how that, that's how I interpret that, but you're saying that's not the case.
Um, if, if they get to the point where we're making a claim against the bond company because they have not solved the problem, then, yes, you're gonna want money put in, in the general fund to pay for whatever fund to pay for, and that's gonna be after you've made demand upon them to take care of it, you're gonna wanna go hire the contractor to take care of it, because they will save money by handling it themselves.
And, uh, if the worst of the worst of the worst happens, then I'm saying, I realize that the money would end up coming to the county, but then I'm also saying, who else would we wanted to go to, other than ourselves, we just don't want, even if it comes to us, we're not taking responsibility for what the owner and or project people should be doing themselves first.
I think once we've accepted bond payment, we accept responsibility to let that project.
And that payment wouldn't come until the bond company has made their best efforts to clean up the project.
Yes.
That's the nature of the bond.
Yes.
So, is there, is there any way we can add language that, and you've stated that the landlord would also have a bond, but do we have any lan- language that requires that?
We don't, but we did, we have to look at the lease.
Okay.
And, all the information I have is that the landlord's gonna bottom off to protect his land from decommissioning, and, I think, that's, that's the research I have done, is determination would be two bonds, one to landlord, this, landlord, gotta, gotta have decommissioning protection, because you're gonna be saying to landlord, get that junk off, off your land.
Yep.
That's your first demand, is the landlord, you've got a hazardous nuisance there, get it solved, get rid of it.
And we made, we, we put that caveat in before, it was, there was a little bit of contention on whether or not we should be able to view those leases, but we do, we did decide that we will require those leases to be shared with us, and that's, that's one.
Can we put a line in the sand in this section that says that the county isn't responsible for any expense beyond the payment of the bond?
So, the answer to that, you're not, you're not financially responsible to fix anybody's nuisance. There's no, the county's not responsible to solve the junk, pile of junk in Phil Kelly's backyard, you hire it done, and you put it on my, you assess it to my taxes, so it can be paid and it's a tax legal.
That would be some good language.
But that's the state statute, Russ.
So it's already, you have the statute called out in this?
Don't need to, because, uh, we don't need to call out every state statute that affects these things in the document, because the state statute isn't, it's there, it's not canceled, it's part of.
It's implied.
It's in, yeah, so, this is a regulation that's prepared, subject to your authority as a county board under state statute.
Okay.
And you have nuisance, nuisance enforcement authority under state statute.
I think we had a little bit of this discussion on the, on the, uh, solar, solar side, really, and, okay.
Some of the research I saw suggested they would try and figure out better ways to recycle those blades, and other ways to use the material, so, maybe they're, maybe all coming down. Is that technology?
Well, would you say that this would conclude your explanation of the, all right, we are in a public hearing, and, um, so I would ask, uh, if there's anyone here that would want to speak in opposition of approving these new regulations, um, I would invite you to come forward, state your name, spell your name, and give, um, your thoughts on the, on the regulations. Is everyone here for that? I said in opposition, didn't I?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, uh, um, that would like to speak on that, and so if you're here to speak in, um, agreement with these regulations, I'd invite you to come and speak on that as well. I'm not seeing any hands go up, so with that, I would, um, let the record show that there were no one to speak on either, either side of this issue.
I, I would just say one thing, I did receive a text message from Casey Debus, who would, um, generally say she says the regulations look good. She wishes the setback from dwellings was further, so if we could include that in the opposite, comments for opposition, um, I guess those are also for and against there, um.
And what setback she said?
Uh, she wishes the setback from dwellings was further.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
We did increase that setback, Russ, as compared to the.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, um, I'm going to officially close the public hearing, and go to any discussion from commissioners. Um, I, um, understand, um, Russ's concerns, I hope that all of the things that has been discussed has helped rectify that as best we can, I'm not sure the exact language is what you would like to see it, but I know that, um, we had some of this discussion last time, and then ended up, um, approving them, and I, I'm of the hope and trust that all of those things that, as Phil has described it, and as state statute allows for remedy, that, um, that they would, um, be in place well enough for us to be able to, um, deal with the problem, and the issue of, um, that ultimately the lease would come before us, which would, we would want to have, um, address a possible bond for the landlord, which would help, um, have money available for decommissions properly. But any, any other comments?
I don't think that anyone making these decisions tonight will be here when the first decommissioning takes place, uh, just trying to cover for children, grandchildren down the road, because there's a lot of things open, we'll, we'll, who's sitting here probably never see one decommissioned, but there's, there's still questions in my mind here.
Well, I read through this, and, uh, I think Phil and Billy did a good job, I think he's covered very well, um, I don't see any future problems.
I would only say that I, I think there's certainly a potential of, of issues coming up down the road that we don't, we're not even thinking of today. And I think some of those things could come up, but I hope that, um, the things that are talked about here, um, that we've done the best possible, um, job that we can to, um, try and deal with the things that we can foresee today, and then with the thought of the, um, bond being reviewed every five years, um, hopefully this issue of decommissioning and covering the cost of decommissioning would be, um, uh, dealt with, and I think that allows us to, to deal with that the best we can, so, at this point, I'm of the thought of approving. Turner?
Yeah, I th- I think, uh, you know, it's been a year now, since we've, you know, realized that we had some gaps in our regulations, um, here we are with, with new regulations to protect the, our, to protect our county, to protect our way of life, to protect, um, the taxpayers of Scotts Bluff County, and, um, you know, wish we could've done this quicker, uh, but I think we did, um, did what we needed to do. There will be things that we did not think of, there will be things that all of these other counties that have gone before us to write regulations, that they haven't thought of, that we haven't thought of, those things are, are going to happen, um, which is why it was important for us to put that clause in there, that before any building permit is approved, you know, it does come back to the county board, um, so, with, with that, I, I'm, um, willing to, uh, vote for approval of these regulations today, and do we need to lift a wind moratorium?
It's, it's jet hour.
Okay?
Well, it's further down the line, but not much.
But we're gonna do that as a separate matter.
Okay.
The, um, the only thing we talked about was under the setbacks, we talked about, um, um, sentencing or something, whichever is greater, do we need to address that in this motion?
If you make a motion, like, to who, including the, um.
One point two five from county road, type of language, is, so it'd be amended. You, you would precisely say, uh, of at least three hundred feet, or one point two five total height, uh, whichever is greater from the road. And that would be on pages, uh, four and six for items being amended.
Okay, so, I would, um, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the new regulations, uh, to include the amended items on those two pages referring to the, uh, three hundred feet or one point two five from public roads.
Whichever's greater.
Whichever's greater.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the new regulations as presented with the, um, addition of, um, the setback requirements, whichever was required as discussed? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses?
All right, so the motion is, um, carried, and, um, so the. so the regulations have been approved. We appreciate all the work you guys have done on this and, um, I know it's been a long time coming. Hopefully if there is some projects out there that someone wants to do, and I haven't heard of wind projects specifically, but if there's something out there, hopefully they can go ahead and start working on putting the process together. Thanks for your help. Um, so this concludes the items under the building and zoning section of our agenda. The next area is Board of Equalization, supposedly at four thirty. And, uh, but anyway.
You know how you guys like to talk.
Yeah, so we need a, a motion to go into the Board of Equalization.
Make a motion to the Board of Equalization.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to go on Board of Equalization, let's vote.
You have four yeses?
Alright, so we're moving into the Board of Equalization at this time. Um, the only item under this is to receive the tax list corrections, which we have a written copy of those. Is there any comment, uh, Robert? Okay, we have, um, have that information this evening, uh, in front of us, any questions from commissioners?
I'll make a motion to receive the tax list corrections.
I'll second it.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses?
Alright, the motion's carried, we have a motion to go out of Board of Equalization.
I move that we leave Board of Equalization.
I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses?
Okay, the motion's carried to go out of the Board of Equalization. The next item on our agenda is, um, road and bridge.
Do you have anything in here that we need to pull for you, Bill? Oh, okay.
So the first item is discuss and consider the CBMP agreement, project number STWD dash CBMP nine. Steve, you wanna tell us about that?
Yes. Um, back in the fall, back in November, October, November, uh, NDOT took, uh, applications for the new ninth round of the County Bridge Match Program. Uh, we submitted two, uh, applications or proposals at that time. And in December seventeenth, uh, they awarded both of our proposals to the, for the ninth round of the bridge match. There were forty-six proposals, eleven of them were picked, in which we got two of them. So this here is simply the contract, uh, for the bridge, uh, bridge agreement with NDOT, just like all the other seven of them, what we've done. One is the resolution where the, uh, commissioners approved, the chairman's signature on the agreement. The resolution is, says, uh, Nebraska Scottsburg County is proposing a transportation project for which it would like to obtain County Bridge Match Funds. And Nebraska Scottsburg County understands that it must strictly follow all state and local laws, rules, regulations, policies, and guidelines applicable to the funding of the project. And Nebraska Scottsburg County and Nebraska Department of Transportation wish to enter into a new program, new project program agreement, setting out the various duties and funding responsibilities for the project. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Scottsburg County. The Chair of the Scottsburg County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to sign the attached project program agreement between Scottsburg County and the NDOT. Scottsburg County is committed to providing local funds for the project as required by the project program agreement. And then it lists the, uh, program, project number STWD, uh, CBMP nine, and the County Bridge Match number, so. Um, in this project, we have one, it'd be a half mile west of Mitchell, of the fairgrounds there. Um, it goes over Spotted Tail Creek. That one is proposed as a five hundred thousand dollar project. Uh, they're going to, uh, contribute two hundred and seventy-five thousand for that one. And the other bridge it was in there is northeast of Minotair, over Pathfinder Canal, I believe it is. And that one there, they're contributing a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to that one.
And that's the second item on this.
Is that just gonna be a deck replacement on that, Steve? On Pathfinder?
Uh, the Pathfinder one is a, just a concrete slab deck replacement, yes. So the structure east of Mitchell, the bigger one, is a total replacement.
I should tell you that over the weekend I did, uh, drive down to Minotair and went over that new bridge, and it's really good.
Wasn't that a nice job?
Yeah.
Very nice. You've got some video of it for us to look at.
But it looked good?
You've done well.
Um, so I'm assuming this first item on the agenda is the bridge that's, um, west of the fairgrounds?
Yes, yes, the first item, it's, they included both bridges in one contract, so.
So do we need to, we have two separate items on the agenda?
You can at least just go into the folder down below.
Yeah, just pull up the.
So I think it's gotta plug.
Be alright. So yes, the resolution covers both, both bridges in the agreement, so.
Okay.
With the same project number?
Yes, with the same project number.
So you have two things on the agenda, you need to go under red and bridge and.
Yes, the next, the next item is something, something different than this.
Okay, so the first item is these two projects?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So are you gonna show us something about?
In the next one, I will, that's the next one.
Okay, so we're ready to, um, take action on the first item then?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement, the County Bridge Match Program Agreement, project number STWD dash CBMP nine.
I'll second that.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for the mentioned project. Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Is there any way to know how many projects applied for this round of funding?
Forty-six.
Forty-six applied, eleven were approved, and two of them were from our county, yes.
That was a good, big deal.
Right. Amazing.
Alright, so has everyone voted? Oh, yeah, we're not gonna see, just tell us what you got.
Four yeses?
Four yeses, so the motion's carried? Alright, so, um, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is discuss and, or, yeah, discuss and consider resolution for proper completion of project STWD dash CBMP seven, structure C zero zero seven nine three two four one zero. Steve, can you explain that to us?
This is the County Road M Bridge that was closed back in twenty twenty. Uh, it has reached completion, this bridge also was under the, uh, County Bridge Match in the seventh round. And so now it has been completed. Um, this is a resolution, uh, stating that the project has been completed, so we can receive our funds. Uh, the reimbursement on this one is, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand. I took some pictures here, got some pictures of what they, what the, uh, structure looked like kind of before we started this, just so you could kinda, uh, see what was done. It was all timber. This pier here, you can see was right in the middle of the stream with the debris, catching debris. So, that was the deck and why it was closed, is the stringers were rotted. So this is what the bridge looks like now, as it goes through the, through the videos. So this is all concrete slabs now, twenty-eight foot wide. The, there was a new pier put in and the, uh, piling are encased in concrete that you will see here. The pier sits to the side of the channel now, instead of in the middle, which should help eliminate, uh, catching the debris as it goes through there. That was the existing pier, they did some updating on it, here's the new pier now. So. So yeah, this is simply the resolution approving that the project was done, uh, according to the sta- minimum design standards, and simply asking NDOT to reimburse us our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we simply just need the motion to approve the resolution, I can read this one too if you want, or if you guys all had it, I think, in all of them, so it's up to you.
We have a copy of it, um, I'm not sure it needs to be read, what do you guys think?
No.
Okay.
Could you just read the caption, that's.
Okay, so, the resolution is the signing of the project program agreement, BL twenty-four thirty-five, and the resolution that goes with that.
There you go, look, look at the, he's got his drone out, look at the drone pictures.
I see a very inexperienced drone operator there.
You look more experienced than you think, that looks pretty, pretty good. That's a nice job, you go out and look at that, it's top notch, huh? Done well.
Before, if you seen the posting, it was a five ton bridge, now it's a, a ninety-nine ton bridge, so.
Good, sounds great. Allows those farmers in that area to be able to.
Right.
Take their equipment across, heavy loads.
I bet there's a lot of people had to go out around a long ways to farm that area, so it's, it's a good, good move.
Yeah, it's a good deal to have it done. Okay? So you're presenting that, um, resolution to us to approve then?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for proper completion of project STWD, CBMP seven, structure C zero zero seven nine three two four, County Road M, County Road Bridge.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, take your.
Yeah.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses?
Alright, so the motion's carried, um, we're going to, um.
Close.
Go ahead.
Steve's up next.
I see that, yeah, so we're gonna go ahead and do Steve's, and then, sorry ladies, but we're gonna take a short break. Eight minutes is all, okay? So, but anyway, we're gonna let Steve go ahead and do his next item. Um, the next item is under general agenda items, discuss and consider the NDA or Nebraska Department of Agriculture, year-end reports, activity, budget, control plan, infestation, and roster. Steve?
Okay, so yearly, the Department of, Nebraska Department of Agriculture lets, uh, these five reports submitted to them by January thirty-first for the previous year. To go through these quickly, um, first the weed control plan. The Department of Ag comes out and inspects certain areas of your county and gives you a report or an inspection report on those. Um, in the past, it looks like they've, uh, inspected eight places. I went out and looked at these and it doesn't appear that they've re-inspected them, because, you know, seven out of the eight outside of the one they inspected this year were pretty, pretty weak three. So that's why in that part of the weed control plan, it says that you can come do another inspection. It stipulates and I guess clarifies what your plans are for the next year, what you do as far as weed control. It's a pretty basic report. Um, the other one is an activity report, uh, that tells you, um, how many inspections we did, we did two hundred and three inspections last year. Eighty-three letters to people. How many of the weeks out of the year you had, you had a weed superintendent. And that activity report also asks for the chairman's signature on that. There's a budget report in there that is also on the activity report, and those are simply the budget numbers from the previous year to end this year's budget, uh, with the superintendent salaries on there. The weed infestation report, we enter this into what's called Weed Mapper, it's a Department of Ag Nebraska, uh, website. And that's how these numbers are generated as far as, uh, acres infested, so for Canada Thistle, in the county, if you look at the bottom, it has twenty-six thousand eight hundred acres infested with Canada Thistle in the county. So, when we mark the Weed Mapper map for infestation, mark it in the plasters like you see on Beacon for somebody's acres, it goes in for the total acres, even though it's, it may be a hundred and sixty acres or six hundred acres, we kinda have to just make an educated, uh, guess on how many acres are infested in that six hundred, and that's how these acres are, come up with, when we make those, uh, those entries into the Weed Mapper. And then of course, the Weed Control Authority Board roster is you guys, the board makes up the, the Weed Authority Board. And that's just as simply your names and years you've been on here and, uh, of course, the address here at, uh.
That's your office phone number, that's a, your district?
Uh, no, the, your guys' phone number has Lisa's number on there. Uh, then I list myself as a superintendent, that has that office phone number on there on the weed roster. So, um, those are the five reports.
I got a question.
Yep.
Under noxious weed infestations. Under, uh, noxious weed infestations on Fragmites, the previous year was eighteen acres, and now it's currently a hundred eighty-nine.
So you'll see that down on the river, is where it is, so.
Is that the?
Like I say, that number is, those are.
Estimated?
Yeah, they're estimated, so, uh, you really just try to, when you see it.
Is that a tall grass?
Yes.
With kind of a poofy?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay, I saw a lot of that down on the interstate.
Yeah, you see more of it as you get down towards, uh, uh, the east end of Morrel County, Garden County, down in Ovalales, where you see more of it at. Some of these, we don't have, uh, like the, I can't even say how, Seriza, Lesbadoza, we don't even have that.
What's it look like?
It's a tall, dry looking grass, it has like a little poof on the top, you see a lot of that.
I saw a lot of that on like Highway thirty, going to the progress.
There's a lot of that on the interstate round, uh, Carney and West.
It's, it's a hard one to, to control and kill, that's why back east, especially along the library, uh, up through the sandals, I had a heck of a time with it up that way, so. And of course, it's got last year's numbers, um, are simply pulled from last year's, uh, reports of the previous year, so.
But this simply is the report that you have to give to the state?
Yes, yep, have to turn it in with the chairman's signature on them and, uh, it makes me happy, I guess.
Okay. Any comments, uh, this evening on this item from the public?
How come Puncture Vine isn't an noxious weed?
Yeah.
It should be, huh? So that's, it's kinda weird when you think noxious weeds and, uh, you think because you see, you know, like common mullet right now is bad in the county. But the Department of Ag will tell you to be careful to declare extra weeds, noxious weeds, because then you also have the responsibility of spraying them too and, you know, the financial part of it. The state also looks at it before they declare a noxious weed like Puncture Vine, is it controllable? So like the state doesn't have vine weed as a noxious weed, because they say it's not controllable. So, yeah. So, it's, it's kind of, uh, kinda weird, I mean, so. So.
Thank you for bringing it up today.
If that's on the state highway, that's up to them to spray that, they're supposed to spray that.
I, I was there over there, I just didn't know what it was, so I took a picture.
But, but yeah, that, that's how the state looks at declaring noxious weeds, if it's even controllable, whether or not to declare it a noxious weed, if they don't see it controllable, they don't declare it a noxious weed. That's why a lot of counties, even our county, has vine weed as a noxious weed, but the state doesn't. So, but then you don't get the state's help, if you ever wanna pursue a, a forced control on it, you're on your own. The state won't give you any assistance to fight that, so, because it's not on the list, their state list.
So they are gonna help us with it?
No, not with vine weed, not on the county noxious weeds, which is vine weed and, uh, Scotch this.
How did it get on there then?
Uh, this, at one time, a weed superintendent brought it to the board and they declared it a noxious weed, that's how that works.
Should that be removed?
So. So.
Perhaps you're gonna have to spray for it.
I mean, you can. We do spray for it anyway on our right of ways. So with the mixture we put up for our thistle and that, it does kill vine weed also. So we spray for it too. But have we, most of our control or letters this year have just been thistle. So, you see it everywhere, so. And it's a, yeah, you could take it off. Scotch thistle is also on there. So as a county vine weed or county thistle, not a state one, so.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? So, I'm trying to figure out what this, um, motion needs to say and then at the end of it, it says that approve the commissioner.
I think just simply, uh.
Approve and receive.
Yeah.
Do it.
Yeah. I think simply just a motion to approve and receive the chairman's signature on that county reports, the five of them.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the chairman's signature on the NDA, year-end reports, activity, budget and control plan, infestation and roster.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, so the motion's approved?
Yes.
All right, we are gonna take an eight minute, eight minutes. It's six oh one, so we'll resume at six oh nine. We'll take a recess.
We're almost done, right?
Well, no, but I don't, some of these shouldn't take too long. I do have six oh nine. We're gonna give Charlie about thirty seconds and then we'll go ahead and get started.
And now you've given him sixty.
Yeah, so, um, our meeting will come back to order. We'll come to the next agenda item, which is receive a UNL programming update from Jessica Grosskoff, the Agricultural Economics Cropping System Extension Educator, Director of Nebraska Women in Agriculture. So, Ms. Jessica, go ahead.
Do you want me to spell for you or are you good?
You're, you're on it.
All right. Uh, well, thank you all for having me today. Um, I'm a little bit of a different, uh, extension appointment maybe than you have seen before. I am a regional economist, which basically means that I work with farmers and ranchers on the business side of their operation. And if you look at, uh, what I provided you today, um, I cover sixteen counties in western Nebraska and I get to do the things that most farmers and landowners despise. And that includes, uh, bookkeeping, financial management, commodity programs, lease agreements, and some of the fun things you all get to deal with as well. So, um, just to give you a little bit of an idea, uh, in twenty twenty-four, uh, I did sixty-three program activities for over five thousand participants. So that's teaching, creating content, um, as well as hosting events here in Scottsbluff County. Um, something that's really interesting about my position is that I am not county funded and I'm not even state funded. I am a federally funded employee of Nebraska Extension, but we still require the support of county commissioners like yourselves so that we can host these programs here in Scottsbluff County and the other counties that I serve. So just to give you an idea of some of the things that I, uh, am teaching, um, so here at the end of the week, I'll be doing a land leasing workshop. I also teach things like grain marketing, um, crop insurance, farm estate and transition planning, uh, and more. So that's all there. Um, if you flip that first page on the backside, uh, you can see, learn a little bit about the Nebraska Women in Agriculture Conference, which is another part of my role here at Nebraska Extension. Um, but then down there at the bottom of page two, um, you can see that last year in twenty twenty-four, I had over two million dollars, uh, worth of grants that I was a part of, um, bringing my total somewhere around the fifty to seventy thousand dollar range, uh, for my lifetime of, of twelve years here with Nebraska Extension. So I don't wanna bore you too much. Uh, I'll, I'll open it up for questions and, and take, uh, any questions that you may have for me, um, as a part of Nebraska Extension.
I have one question. Um, recently we've seen, um, about filling out that form, what's it called?
The Beneficial Ownership Interest Report as a part of the FENCE and Reply, uh, filing, yes.
Is that part of what you're in charge of?
That's correct. So, um, actually last November, maybe it was December, um, I actually hosted a workshop for farmers and ranchers to help them file that report, um, on their own. Actually had one scheduled, or actually two scheduled for this week here in Scottsbluff and Morale County, but now that it's voluntary again, I'm waiting for them to decide what they do. But those are the exact things that I do is try to keep my finger on the pulse of things like that mandatory reporting that they haven't done before and assist them in any way I can to file that on their own behalf rather than paying a third party to do so.
And it's been on again, off again, on again, off again?
Correct, it's off.
And it's off right now?
It's off right now. We'll see what, see what, it, it got pushed up to, uh, the Supreme Court, so we'll see.
And your, your focus is, um, on the farmer's side of things, but, um, is that same on again, off again applicable to business owners and that type of thing as well?
That's correct. So anyone with an LLC or a corporation that filed with the Secretary of State may be required to file the Beneficial Ownership Interest Report.
Okay, but it's off right now?
It's off right now.
Good. I thought I had a breather for a little bit.
Yep.
All right, very good. Um, but yeah, so you're a part of that and yeah, it's been, I'm sure it's been a headache for you, so.
It's always fun to know what the federal government is going to do to us.
Other thoughts or questions from board members?
Do you have financial aspects, estate transfer planning? Do you do that as well?
Yes, so actually I drew the short straw in that series that you see and I actually get to teach the financial acts, aspects, um, on February fourth. So, um, one of my passions is actually helping, helping farm and ranch families work through farm estate and transition planning, especially trying to balance both owners and heirs when it comes to making a viable living. So if you have questions about that, come, come talk to me. We'll, we'll chat about.
That is interesting. Uh, that's something that most of them don't do until, you know, it's the last thing before they put their foot in the water.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, and I'm even, uh, assuming at least some of those same things apply even again into other businesses and things like that.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so, um, Nebraska Extension has another team called the, oh, RPN Rural Prosperity Nebraska Team that also does that for, uh, mainstream, uh, businesses as well. So occasionally we'll partner together on things like that.
Very good. Well, we see your name quite a bit going through the, um, what's happening, uh, and especially in the ag area. And we appreciate all those things that you do. Um, any other questions from commissioners? Again, we appreciate Extension in general and, um, Jackie's been good about keeping us informed, uh, especially lately on several things. And so we appreciate, um, hearing about the things you do and, and the things you offer. And I know that, um, KDB things being ag oriented, that they're, um, keeping us updated on all of these seminars that are happening. So we appreciate that.
Yep, and I'll leave a couple extra handouts if anybody wants one.
Yeah, you might leave one for Mr. Meyer, so, so he can see it when he's back. All right, thanks so much. Thanks, Jackie. Okay, sorry to keep you so long. Okay, all right, so we'll turn the page on our agenda anyway, which is the next item is discuss and consider action on the renewable energy moratorium. So, um, Phil, uh, we simply could take action to, um, stop the moratorium that we put in place?
Why, why are you telling me to quit it on the agenda because discussion after you remove the solar and you extended it, the moratorium, uh, wind and drop, I'm trying to recognize to the department.
Okay, and, uh, at this point, as far as you're concerned, there's no reason to continue that moratorium?
No.
Okay.
It would be inappropriate to.
Right. Any, um, discussion from anyone on that item tonight? Any discussion from commissioners?
I think it's the right thing to do. I think we did the same thing on solar, so I'd make a motion, go ahead and remove the, uh, moratorium.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Question, is there a moratorium on, uh, any, are there the, the solar?
You know, I think the original moratorium was on renewable energies.
Right.
And then we split that up. Once we did the solar, we actually specifically just said wind.
Do we have any other moratoriums we can remove? All of them in the county?
Well, I just want you to pay attention to that question. So if you're, if the motion we remove it, if we.
That's what it was. It could be for renewable energy.
That's, that's what I wanted to bring your attention is to make sure that.
So, do we just state, do we just state both of them, that we remove it with renewable and wind moratorium?
So it's, the, the agenda item says discuss and consider action on the renewable energy moratorium. So do we have a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
And a second.
Something to consider. We're having a discussion.
What was the, can we repeat the motion?
I just made a motion to remove it from the wind energy.
So in discussions here, I think we should, we can approve this and then also we should take another motion to remove the moratorium on renewable energy.
Why don't I just amend my motion?
I was gonna say, why don't we just make the motion be what you want it to be, so.
Yeah, let's do that.
So would your motion then be for the wind and renewable energy?
Yes.
That's what I was suggesting.
Your second would include that?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to remove the moratorium on wind and renewable energy items. Any other discussion? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, hearing no more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
Okay, motion's approved. All right, we'll go to the, um, next item, which is, uh, discuss and consider appointment of communications center director, um, to be given by Troy Brown, Chief Deputy Sheriff and Commissioner Mike Blue. Troy, you wanna start?
Gentlemen of the board, um, as you know, we, uh, decided to go back to the traditional director of the communications center instead of the training, or the communications center coordinator's position. Um, so we did that. We opened it up for applications, back in September?
Nope, beginning of November.
Beginning of November?
Okay.
So, uh, and we ended up with four applicants, uh, throughout the application program. We did extend the application to see if we could garner some more interest. Um, we, we didn't get any more interest. So on the, what was it, fifth of December, we, uh, had an interview panel. That panel consisted of myself, Commissioner Blue, uh, Scottsbluff Police Chief, uh, Tom Schingle and.
Fire Chief.
Uh, Scottsbluff Fire Chief, sorry. And then, uh, Regional West Ambulance, uh, Sean Bob McGarrett, he's paramedic, we're on the board. Um, the questions, we came up with some pretty good questions, talked about leadership, supervision, and of course, all the technical aspects of dispatching, an operation, operating a dispatch, uh, center. Um, I think each applicant was right at an hour or longer during the interviews. Um, and of the, of the four applicants, we did come up with a, a very good number one, um, which, uh, in, as the opinion of the interviewers was Selinda Howard, was suggested as being, uh, the, the one appointed as the next director of the communications center.
Okay, appreciate that. Mike, you wanna comment?
Yes, uh, we felt that, uh, we definitely need to fill the director slot because, uh, our center is, it's just, it's growing, it's getting better and better. Uh, we're doing dispatching for Box Creek County Sheriff and there's a strong possibility in the future we'll be doing dispatching for other agencies outside of our county. And we just thought we need to have the director's position filled, uh, because we know they get better. And Selinda, her experience and, uh, of course, her presentation, we witnessed a few meetings back was very good, uh, excellent presentation. And I, as well as the other members on the interview board, really felt very comfortable in Selinda's qualifications and her leadership skills and her, uh, I think really superior knowledge. Uh, and I just feel that, uh, Selinda and her dispatchers are gonna lead us into even the more quality dispatch for our area. Because the demand by outside agencies, the law enforcement, uh, fire services and EMS is growing and getting greater and greater. And we're talking about safety. Uh, I'm a real safety conscious person. I want safety as a priority, not only for our citizens, but our first responders. And I think with Selinda's leadership and the quality of dispatcher she has working with her, uh, we're gonna be top notch and safety is gonna be greatly, greatly improved for everybody. So, thank you, Selinda.
So, um, the recommendation then from the interview committee was, is for, um, Selinda?
Yes, the point, Selinda, Director of Communications Center.
Okay. Um, and that's certainly the agenda item. Is there any other discussion, um, this evening on this item?
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Depending on how this goes, do you want me to get your discussion points updated on?
Maybe on that sheet, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, okay, any other discussion from board members? I certainly, um, trust your, um, judgment on the, uh, committee that, um, did the interviewing and we appreciate your work on that and, uh, bringing in some outside people to help with that as well. So, um, the agenda item is to discuss, which we have, and then consider appointment, um, to that position. So do we have a motion to that effect?
We'll all move that, uh, we accept, uh, the appointment of, uh, Selinda Howard as our Scottsbluff County nine-one-one director.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, so the motion's carrying. Congratulations. Now, if you wanna say something, come on up.
I do like to talk. Um, I just wanna say thank you for giving me the opportunity, um, to continue to serve Scottsbluff County and the citizens in a new role.
We thank you. We've heard a lot of good things happening and we appreciate, um, the teaching and training that you've done there and, um, uh, we appreciated the presentation that you had the other day for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay.
We're look out, careful what you wish for.
So we'll go on to the next item, which is part of that possibly, the, to discuss and consider continuance of communications center oversight by Scottsbluff County Sheriff's Department, Lisa?
We currently have this budgeted at fifteen thousand dollars for the year for the sheriff's oversight, and with the now hiring a director, that would alleviate the need for the oversight at some point, I'm not sure Selinda's ready to just send Troy away right away, but maybe in the next month or two, I guess I needed to see what your thoughts and plans were, if you had any other thoughts from the board's perspective.
I'd like to hear from Troy and Selinda what their opinions are.
Gentlemen of the board, yes, um, there's gonna be a, a, a big growing pain coming up here pretty soon, uh, but Selinda's replacement, she's got to find a replacement, uh, Steve Hessler retired as a comm. center supervisor, will have to replace that position, which probably means we'll have to hire two more dispatchers, which if you're looking at a six-month training program to get them ready to go on the floor, along with all the other director duties that Ms. Linda's gonna have to pick up and learn and figure out what, uh, what she needs to do just to manage the department. So, yeah, we're here to help as long as she needs us to help her to keep operations going and maintain that continuity of operations, so it doesn't, we don't have any breakdowns anywhere, um, so as long as that takes for her, and when she's comfortable, she's got her staff in place and her legs under and ready to go, um, then we can redress that, at that time, but, yeah, we're here to help her as long as we need to, so she's successful.
Okay. So, um, I guess from my standpoint, it seems that, um, with filling some positions, that she may need some additional, um, help, um, from, from your standpoint, I know you've been the, the point person, uh, between you and the sheriff, um, but, um, certainly I would hope that, um, yeah, at some point that we'll be able to say, okay, Selinda's got it, and, um, I know that you'll always be helpful, but to the point where we can say that the money part of it, the agreement, can be discontinued, and at the very least, let's see, our fiscal years at, what, the end of June?
June.
So, at the very least, we could be talking about then, and hopefully, maybe sooner than then.
Right.
Would be my thought process.
Absolutely, yeah, as soon as she's comfortable, yeah, we can definitely take a step back.
Selinda, give it to her. Right, and you guys can start to step back some.
Right, we just don't wanna-
And maybe it's a phase-in process.
Exactly, we just don't wanna do it too quick and, 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 it costs rip, it costs rip, we want it to be as smooth as we can keep it.
Just abandon it.
Good.
Yeah.
We appreciate what you guys have done there, um, but I think you helped us in a time that was, we had some concerns and issues going on,
Right.
and we've, I think, uh, got most of that straightened out, but I think it's, uh, would be appropriate, and even from the other members of the, um, uh, nine-one-one board, um, thinking that, um, at some point that we would step back from that, so, I think that's good.
Right. Right.
Okay. Um, any other thoughts from, um, commissioners?
Well, I'm thinking minimum of three months to six months.
And that six month would put us at the end of the fiscal year, so. Alright, so somewhere in that neighborhood, we're talking, hopefully.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, and if something comes up different, you, we could, you guys can inform us, that might give you some direction.
Exactly, I just, do we need to bring it back as an agenda item, or just assume that?
Let's see if it phases into, into where that three to six month period, uh?
Okay.
Okay. Alright. If there's, uh, I don't see us taking any action on that specifically, other than what we just mentioned. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move on then to the next item, uh, the next item is discuss and consider approval of applications for personnel board, layperson for commissioners. Um, that's a position on the personnel board that, um, uh, Mr. Schuler's position was, um, kinda, I don't wanna say term limiting, but his, his term is coming to a, uh, an end, but he's not limited out, he can-
It's a four-year.
Right. And he's been on for four years.
And we just re- Right.
And then, but he can be reappointed, as far as that goes.
Absolutely.
We did, um, I guess, Lisa, you, you give us your information, and then we'll go from there.
I've received one, um, letter of interest, thank you, and then we also, Mark and I were discussing the fact that Tony did say he would re, he would, he would serve another four years if we chose, but I did not hear from Tony specifically, but, anyway, the one person I have heard from, gentleman in the community named Bruce Hall. Are you Mr. Hall? Okay. I say he's the one person, I thought he was here. Um, and he lists, I am a native of Scottsbluff Gearing and spent thirty-four years in Colorado. I retired in twenty eighteen and returned to Scottsbluff where I reside at twenty-five oh one fifth of it. While in Colorado, I started a branch in Denver for a large manufacturer distributor out of Phoenix, and do have management and personnel experience, our business dealt with large commercial construction projects and the mining industry. So I'm well-versed in dealing with regulatory agencies as well, from two thousand three to two thousand eight, we grew from two hundred fifty thousand annual contract to having built two new buildings and averaging over a million dollars in sales per month, I would welcome an opportunity to visit with you about the requirements and duties for the position, so. That's what he wrote to us.
Okay. So, it would appear to me that we have potential of two people that at least, uh, Mr. Schuler has expressed that he would be interested in, um, continuing to serve if we, um, chose.
If we could choose him.
Right. So we really, in my opinion, we have two applicants here. The, uh, so-
And in the next, we are scheduling a meeting for January twenty-third.
Is our next meeting, so January twenty-third, and again, we meet, um, four times a year, um, generally, and, um, every once, those, those dates are pretty well set, isn't it, the third?
Third or fourth, Thursday of the month.
Right, and every quarter, every once while they get moved, if there's a-
Somebody has a-
Conflict of some kind.
So.
But, um-
Yeah, January, April, July, October, and they last a couple, usually about two hours on a Thurs, Thursday, starting at four-thirty.
Right. And the, uh, yeah, and this specific position is a, um, layperson from the community, um, that is appointed by the commissioners.
Correct.
Well, we have two applicants, shouldn't we possibly put a two-man committee together and interview them?
Hey. I don't know that that's necessary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Tony's, Tony has a track record that we, you know, I think he did a good job for us, um, I think, um, his time on the board, um, should, should, should act as his resume to us, um, and then our, our, our knowledge of Bruce is, um, you know, I, I think it's, I'm, I'm, what I, what I'm saying is, I'm comfortable with some new blood on the, on, in that position for us.
With what?
I would be comfortable with new blood in that position for us, um, just based on, um, you know, I really appreciate what Tony did for us, stepping in when we needed to, um, fill that position, but I'd be, I'd be very supportive of Bruce stepping into that for us.
I would only say that, um, I would be supportive of Bruce as well, and, um, I'm, I don't know Bruce well, but I know him a little bit from previous, um, um, contact with him. Mike?
Well, I've known Bruce for probably, probably in excess of, uh, forty years. I, I know what he's very capable of, I, I've seen him, uh, he's helped me out a few times on some, uh, fact gathering, uh, and I just feel that, and I know Bruce really has a heart for his community, and I think he's the type of individual I think would do a very good job on the personnel board, he brings a wealth of knowledge, and a new outlook.
Well, I know Tony, and I know, I've met with Bruce and spoke with Bruce and talked to him, and I, and I have no problem with either one, I think they're both respectable and would do us a good job, so, I'm good with, with, uh, either one.
How long before, uh, di- didn't you publish it? Didn't you publish this?
Yeah, the, the, uh-
Has it expired?
Yesterday.
Do they need?
So we need to make a decision?
Well, it just said we had to have interest or applications in the town.
Yeah. So we wanna take action this evening?
Well, I think we do only in that, the meeting is coming up on the twenty-third, so, to that extent, I think we should.
And we, we still have the agenda item, or it is essentially making a decision.
Action. Charlie, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I would, uh, move that we make Bruce Hall the, uh, personnel board layperson for the commissioners.
I'll second that.
Alright, so the motion is for Bruce to fill that position, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses?
Okay, so the motion's carried, looks like you're, um, um, yeah, on that, yeah, and, uh, Lisa is the, um, uh, staff person that's in charge of that group, so if you have any questions, um, uh, you can talk to her, I'm the commissioner representative for that board as well, the other ones is, um, Gene Bowers, the president, um, and then Becky Stitt is a new one, she's, um, been in personnel, uh, HR-type stuff for years around the community, and, let's see, who else?
Tim White.
Oh, yeah, Tim White, from the mapping department, so, anyway, that's the five. Yeah, he comes, the employees appointed him, so, okay, so, congratulations. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, next item is discuss and consider approval of installation of security glass at the county court, Sheriff, you wanna start with that?
Gentlemen, I have some, uh, some other interested parties here, Diane Lanna. Come on up, Diane. And Darla Simpson, they both know a lot about what's going, about security issues in the courthouse, and that's why we're here today, because as, as you well know, we have some security glass around virtually everything that the county has right now, and so, somehow, and I don't really know why this happened, if there wasn't someone else to do it, or what, maybe Diane knows, but when we did the glass for everybody else, I mean, Darla's, Darla just got the glass in her, her office, and so, county court is now something that we need to do, Jay, uh, Jay was a little out of the weather today, so he kept coming, he supports us too, uh, that is something beyond what these guys can do, so they'd wanna, they wanna bid this. Uh, so that's why we're here to talk to you, uh, so if you have any questions about what's going on, I, I can tell you that we need to go to security there, security is an issue, and it's more of an issue now than it's ever been, people are just different now, and, uh, so we've got staff over there, and we're concerned, we've got deputies over there, and lately, we've had more deputies over there, just because of things that happen, and I think these ladies know that well, so if you have any questions for them, I think, we're just looking for some authorization to, to go out and use Jay to, uh, come up with ideas and bits.
And Darla's has already just recently done.
Yeah, it's not a hundred percent, but-
Still not a hundred percent, no?
But we're close.
What are we waiting?
We were calling it done at some point.
On the bottom, it's just, um, but the glass is up, and I will tell you, it is a world of difference, our customers are not getting nicer and more calm, for, everybody is stressed, um, and while we have customers for a longer period of time than county court, they have more than we do. Everybody in this building is behind glass, and until I got my glass, nobody over there is behind glass. And it just cuts down on the anxiety, um, it increases the security for our staff, it's amazing what that piece of glass does, um, to people on both sides, so I would highly recommend, um, that county court get glass, um, on their counters, um, and have it done professionally, because th- their setup is way different than mine, I had some windows that we could work within, theirs is open counter, so there's gonna have to be some building, there's some construction that I, yeah, it's a little bit better.
So, basically what we need to do now is just go out for bids, and then I guess we can, uh, talk about costs when that comes back.
Right, so, really what we're doing here is, uh, kinda, I, I don't know that it needs a motion, just a consensus that we would be in favor, right?
I think come back with the design in a quote.
You know, we're gonna need that, uh, Jay for that.
Right.
Jay's probably gonna talk to you guys, I'm sure you'll have some insight.
Right?
On, on a good way to do that, and, and so, we did, I mean, we wanna do it best way we can for this.
Sure.
Are you talking both sides? Are you talking at both, yeah?
Yeah, it's both sides.
The south side, and then, uh, so the, one on this side's kind of an L-shaped, and-
Right.
Yeah.
The other one's a straight shot, pretty much, yeah.
But do you remember, the administration building, we didn't have any glass either.
Right.
It was the setup that we had, it was designed, so, I mean, I don't think that should be any bit of a problem for you, Diane?
Well, is, uh, from the commissioner's standpoint, is there any concern about, um, a consensus that, that we would be in, in favor to have Jay proceed with trying to get some proposals together?
I say move forward.
I say move forward, because our primary responsibility is safety of our citizens, and includes our employees, and I know the type of people you guys deal with, and there should be glass there a long time ago, so I'm very supportive of that.
We're supportive, will you be sure and mention it to Jay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he was supposed to be here, you know?
Right.
He was supporting, so I-
If you'll be sure and mention it to him, and then he can start working on it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, uh, that brings us to old business, time clock plus, and payroll processes, Ms. Lisa?
I received an email over the weekend that I can try my integration again, they think they got the bugs out, so, I didn't have a chance today, but I'll, I'll be sending up an appointment.
Any great things, alright. Alright, very good. Um, the next item is public comments, uh, the board of commissioners will receive public comments on items dis- discussed at this meeting, or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting, the board will not take action on comments presented this date. Is there anyone from the public here tonight that would like to comment on anything? Under this item? Alright, let the record show there were none, uh, we next go to board and staff reports, um, with discussion, so, Ms. Lisa, could we start with you, and maybe then go around this way?
I just was gonna comment that I've been asked to set up a building utilization committee meeting, so I believe, Mark, you serve on that, I'll be reaching out to you in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, that'd be fine. Anything else?
I can't think of anything right off, no.
Okay.
Expect to have an ordinance for you on that, parking on the county roads, um, it's a process that requires the clerk to publish some notices and things like that, and, and a hearing, and then, and then publish the ordinance, uh, as part of the minutes, so, we'll get that, get those, uh, done in a checklist here before your next meeting, and then, uh, uh, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to, uh, to let me assist the county with civil work, and our firm to do it. I think we've been providing civil services in the county for over fifteen years, and we've just formalized it, we're here, we're in the middle of last year, we appreciate that opportunity to, uh, assist-
We're in the middle of last year. We appreciate that opportunity to uh assist the county. Uh we work with great department heads and and we make ourselves available for prompt service and answer questions and get back to answer the phone, in other words. And so we appreciate the opportunity and look forward to continuing, so thank you.
Yeah, we do appreciate what you've done and we've said that and certainly I have heard um lots of good comments from this group up here um of the fact that um we're using you and your firm for this process. And I also like the fact that staff is able to contact you freely and quickly, and I shouldn't say free, but freely.
I was gonna say there's something wrong with that.
They're wel- they're they're welcome to contact you though to get guidance and advice on how they should handle certain issues.
Like this.
And we appreciate that and look forward to working with you, Jason, and if you have anything that you would like to mi- mention tonight. We go through this process at every meeting and so if there's something that you want to bring up, you're you're able to do it then and any other time if you have a need to to say things.
Appreciate it. Now, like for tonight, I'm not sure if there's anything else that I'd love to appreciate.
Sure, appreciate it. Others? Staff?
What's your just got out there? You don't have anything?
No.
Wow, I don't believe that.
Okay.
Is the fuel tank okay or the fuel service?
Good.
I just was, it was reported, I saw, where Sheriff said that somebody had an overflow. It hap- okay.
Alright, Charlie?
Um. I I don't have a whole lot.
There you go.
So we had the Naco Annual Conference down there and it was a good time. I think it was great to have so many people from Scottsbluff County attend. Um there were a lot of comments from the Naco staff and the Naco executor executive team. Uh just commented how thankful they were that everybody was there. And during my discussions with the folks that did go, they found it very valuable. You know, it's, it really has been a benefit to Scottsbluff County to have so many people involved with this with Naco and with Naco.
Yes, you.
You know, one one thing we can point to directly is that website. You know, that's a hundred ten, a hundred twenty thousand dollar project, easy. We got to be the pilot project, so we got it for nothing. Um.
We do have monthly maintenance.
Well, we have the month- the monthly maintenance fee is gonna, you know, but we've had that with the old website too, so.
Right.
Uh but the build and the 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 backend uh configurations for that for that website, you know, that's a hundred, easy, a hundred, a hundred ten, a hundred twenty thousand dollar lift that this county uh didn't have to uh fork over, so. You know, and then the the endless uh you know, legal and and statutory um guidance that they give us. So I just wanted to thank everyone for 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 coming down there and being a part of that. Um pad this month has been canceled. Uh TCD will meet on the ninth. Um and tourism is on the eighth. And yeah, so this will be a busy week. Um the one thing that Naco does offer that I was gonna talk to the Board about, um there's a Board Chairman Workshop, February eighth, February fourteenth at the party.
Did I get missed? Cause that's why I have the Naco calendar on.
You know, the um I just had read it on one of my emails that I got and uh I just printed it off at my office to uh um remind me and I'd like to go to that if I could. Is the fourteenth a Friday?
And. Of which?
Yes, fourteenth.
Yes, it is. And it's been, what a, what a day to have that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah.
So it you'll be home by dinner time.
Yeah.
And I mean, I know that you've been a Commissioner for a long time now, um but there's County Board Orientation that you didn't attend the first time you got elected? Going if you would wanna go to that.
If Mark goes, I'd go right now, right now.
I don't think they're at the same time.
Well, those would be different. Those would be different times.
Yeah, they're 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 different.
Yeah.
This one's Friday, January seventeenth.
So what's what's their requirement issue? Naco.
Well, the one is for a new County Board Member and the other one's for Chairman.
So there's.
Right. Well, that's true.
Yeah.
So and there is movement in the Legislature to s- to uh require some some education to be eligible for um election. Um and and every time you attend one of these events, you got credits for being at the Annual Conference, you get credits for going to New Board Member Orientation, you get credits for going to Chairman uh Workshop. Budget Workshop, all that kinda stuff. So um you know, the clerk, I don't know, the clerk, do you have a certification that you have to?
I guess. I mean, we're we're.
Um like the assessor, the assessor has a certification that he has to pass. Uh the treasurer has certifications, the deeds and they'll, well, the deeds has that and the assessor's license, don't they? No, but she does.
That was just something she did.
She did, okay. Well, these education requirements are coming. There's gonna be more and more of them.
Yeah.
Um so Naco and the Legislature have been working together to to start providing these continuing end credits, essentially is the easy way to refer to them as. Um so and I just think that, you know, a lot of times you don't go there and bring something home right away, but you you go there and you learn something in six months down the road twelve months down the road, or you made a contact with somebody who's got experience with that, so um you make those phone calls. It's just been very valuable for me. Um so um and then uh yeah, so I don't know what else to mention about Naco. I guess that's it.
That was a good conference. You, I would like to brag up our Vice Chairman for helping Naco out for the beginning of stuff. On well, working Thursday and Friday both, you did a you did a good job engaging the crowd and you made it fun.
So I'm the I'm the Vice President of Naco this year. If everything goes well, I'll be the President of Naco in twenty twenty six. And so what I'd like to do is just encourage everyone, you know, it would mean a lot to me if if Scottsbluff County really showed up over the next two years.
Oh, I I'm the Secretary of the Court Service for Deeds and Election Commissioners now, moving on that.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it. We appreciate what you do at Naco and you're able to keep, give us firsthand information, what the Board's doing and that's always good. Okay? Anything else, Charlie?
No, no, that's it.
Okay. Um so um Miss Kelly, you might help me with some of the dates. Certainly, our next meeting is on Tuesday instead of Monday. It's the twenty first, I believe.
Yeah, and you are meeting early.
Three thirty.
For photos.
I have that on my list.
Next to your list.
The twenty first.
Okay, Russ needs to be over to the courthouse at nine o'clock for Judge Lipschew.
On the ninth.
Judge Dolgulvoly to swear him in.
On the same day?
No.
No.
Oh, the ninth, isn't it?
January ninth this week.
This Thursday, more importantly, you need to go get sworn in, is what I'm saying.
You and Ken.
Then.
For sure.
Before our next, oh, and then the the twenty first is going to be our reorganizational meeting as well.
Right. So the twenty first at three thirty is the picture.
Can I?
Is your picture on the twenty first, yes.
So we need to be here dressed well for our picture.
I mean, you're gonna be on the wall, so look nice, smile pretty.
Yeah. Right. And then our regular meeting, which is our reorganizational meeting, that same day at four thirty, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then um if we look at February.
Do you need me, you want me to hold it up higher? Can you see?
No, I got one. The uh.
Regular is the third?
Yeah, so February third will be our regular meeting.
And the eighteenth, it looks like.
Yeah, so again, we get pushed, seventeenth is President's Day on Monday, so it gets pushed to the eighteenth. So be sure you note that. It's Tuesday, the eighteenth.
Tuesday for what, for our meeting?
For our second meeting of February.
Oh.
Cause the seventeenth is President's Day. Okay. Okay, and so those are the the more regular meetings that I'm aware of. I don't have all, most of my um committee meetings uh in the community um will be next week. Um not this week, but the next week.
Kelly?
Hmm, let's see, I think I got assigned somewhere. Where's Kelly? I think it's uh, oh, that's for Bill May.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so anyway, we have those dates. Uh couple other things uh that I wanted to mention. Uh so January ninth, which is the swearing in date, is also the date that President Biden um declared to be a national day of mourning.
Federal holiday. Federal holiday.
Which would be a federal holiday. And our Personnel Board um Policy Manual, I believe, talks about if if um we have a federal holiday and a state holiday, that that we also take that day off.
For Christmas Eve.
For Christmas Eve. You guys changed it.
Is that only?
Yeah.
Okay.
It got changed.
So there had been some questions about whether or not January ninth we would be closed. We seen a uh there was an email that the courts would not be closed. They would be operating as normal. They'll have to operate as normal because you'll be getting sworn in that day. And um so the question is, um was there anything different as far as the courthouse being open here? And um was there any discussion amongst, has there been discussion, I guess, amongst people in the administration building?
I wish. They're gonna.
I guess my thought is that we would be open. And Lisa, tell me, you said that you had heard from Scottsbluff Gearing and?
I reached out to City of Scottsbluff and City of Gearing today and they are both remaining open. Village of Moral is closing.
And I've seen a a big thread of clerks throughout the state and there are some closing. I feel like most of them are staying open. I told my girls plan on working. I mean, they did, I I was like, my board's gonna explode. But then I read the manual and I think you guys already addressed it and you made it clear in the discussion about how many Presidents do we have left and
Okay.
Stuff like that. I mean, while you did, that's how you brought it up. That's how you talked about it.
I I know how I feel.
I know, do, I do too, cause I was like, oh geez.
So I'll just, my my recollection of the conversations wa- was that we specified in the handbook that it would be Christmas Eve. If Christmas Eve was designated as a federal and state holiday, then we would also. Previously, the handbook said any other federal holiday would be, would be.
It was very big.
So we we pared that down purposefully to avoid these presidential deaths becoming holidays.
I think that you you guys are agreeing to that. Okay, so the answer is we're not closing.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Everybody agree with that appear?
I agree.
Yes.
Okay. Um and that's according.
And you're not gonna offer a floating holiday or something? That's what the state is doing for the court employees. Okay, just clarifying.
I'm not interested in that.
We already got that one too.
Yeah, so, alright. One other, um there had been an email from your office, Phil, about the Tourism Committee vacancies. And um that we maybe ought to address that at some future meeting, I'm as to um whether or not we want to appoint a a a group to give us a recommendation or not and how we handle that, I guess. Charlie, you're involved with that more on a monthly basis and but your recommendation was just then.
Should be an agenda item.
Right. Right, right. But you had sent an email, I think, to all of us and um.
I looked at the bylaws and it was, it was vague and yeah. So the question.
We should clarify, right. So we need to make it an agenda item sometime. You think you would think about when we should do that, whether it be the next meeting or the next or the next or whatever?
Yeah, we can do it. I think it'd be great to do it the next meeting.
I as well.
Then please, please.
Okay.
Okay, alright. And I think that's all I have, just reminding everyone, we have a jail tour tonight, detention center tour. See, the sheriff is sticking around, so. And we also have an executive session that's coming up there in a little bit, so. But Mike, go ahead with your thoughts.
Well, I attended the Naco Conference. Uh it's a very good conference. I got to meet some pretty informative people, contractors and such. I I always sit in on the emergency management sessions and when I do, I never let them know I'm a Commissioner. Just interesting here, this commit- the name Commissioner comes up a lot in our discussions. And a lot of it deals with the fact that some of them work with Commissioners who know absolutely nothing about what they do and aren't interested in what they do. And so I like to listen in. That way I could do my job better. And uh I've been certified, qualified up to the level I'm supposed to be for years. So I had those qualifications probably fifteen, sixteen years ago. So it's interesting uh listening to what's new in emergency management. Uh the big push right now is getting private individuals and pay big groups more involved in disasters because they're a very inexpensive asset that has a lot of potential. And so that's why it's interesting to listen to that. I have a County Housing uh Board meeting tomorrow. Uh Thursday, I have the Region Twenty Two Advisory Board meeting. We're meeting at, well, that'll probably get canceled because we're meeting at Mitchell. And I don't know if it'll be open or not, we'll find out. But uh we'll be meeting at Mi- Mitchell City Hall for that meeting, so.
He was asking today, so if we haven't heard, it's probably on.
Okay. Uh and like I said before, we're taking the Region Twenty Two Board on the road. We're meeting in all of our different communities, so they see our faces, we see their faces. In the future, I'd like to see that with the nine one one forty two. Is go on the road and be able to meet different people. But that's on that one. And then I I got called for a lost person in Kimball. Uh didn't have to deploy, but I know Sheriff's Office deployed, I think their drone drone team. Yeah, and so there was a lot of good mutual aid cooperation between uh Kimball PD, Scottsbluff Sheriff's Department, their search team down there and some other agencies, so. Communications and mutual aid is growing strong in our area, so that's a good thing.
Is that a s- another, a second person in Kimball?
Yeah, I just, that was a, that was a young man.
Okay, so we've had the the lady from the.
Yeah, we found her by the interstate.
The older lady. And then another recent.
And then this that this young.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, that's it.
So I got to go to my first Naco meeting and conference. It was very fun. We made a lot of contacts with uh equipment, uh with uh bridge repair with, there's a lot of things that we learned about with uh vendors down there. Uh lots of meetings as well. Meals were good and uh yeah, it was really good. I've got uh my first CAP win meeting is tomorrow evening. I'm gonna probably have to visit with Charlie about who to, who would be a contact person there or something. Do you have any ideas on that?
So your first meeting, do you know what time it starts?
I don't have.
I think it starts right at five or right at six.
No, I don't know. I'll have to call there probably in the morning.
I would just, I could, I could send you Betsy's phone number and just send her a text, say, hey, this is Russ.
Okay.
They usually feed you. They usually feed you.
I don't know.
We do.
Yeah.
Okay, she's the new Scottsbluff Mayor too. Betsy Midler.
That's really all I have.
Okay. All right, um, I think that covers that. Uh, Sheriff, you weren't in here, do you have anything you wanna say?
No.
Okay. Um, all right, so, uh, legislation, Charlie, anything further? I know they're getting ready to start.
No, nothing yet. Um, I will mention that Naco has their legislative review day, um, on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth. Uh, January, so there will be some bills that are used, that's when, uh, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth. So you can, uh, join that meeting via Zoom. And if there's any, any legislation, uh, I'm sure Naco will be all over it on our behalf. But, uh, if there's anything you'd like to chime in on, you can certainly pass that information on to me or you can join. It's the twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Jan-.
Of January. They won't have.
I think we get to join on one day, but I think you guys go private as the board. I mean, they don't have it on the calendar for us.
I think the twenty, okay. So the twenty-third is probably when the Naco board gets on there.
And you can register for that and they'll send you the link.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks, Charlie.
I will say that, um, they're super nervous about the inheritance tax being eliminated. Um, probably more so than, than in years past, which is hard to believe. It just seems like every year it's, it's even more under attack, which is, you know, I think we need to really move towards finding replacement revenue and just surrender the inheritance tax. Otherwise, we're gonna be on the outside of the deal and we're not gonna get any sort of replacement revenue. Um, so, uh, I think they have the votes to repeal the inheritance tax completely. And so if we're not at the ta- if, if Naco's not at the table, if the county boards aren't at the table, um, we could, we could see a significant drop in revenue for the town. But I think generally, I think people are, are against inheritance tax. And they would, they would, you know, there's other ways to raise that revenue, you know, fees that haven't changed for, for fifty years. You know, dock stamps, that kinda stuff, uh, there, there's.
Well, they, they left it in fact, I think they're charging for it, they're just going to inspect it. The last I knew, they were still charged. Pardon me? Yeah, used to.
Well, we charge for a certified copy of a marriage license and, I mean, it's nine dollars.
Yeah. Well, I think, um, just be aware that the session's gonna be starting up. And, um, yeah, we always look to Naco, um, and Charlie being our representative on Naco to, um, keep us abreast as to what's going on. John Cannon, that's his biggest job, I think, in his overall scheme of things. That's what he does, um, more than anything, so let's be sure we're all aware of that. And if we have input, feed it through Charlie or, um, and, and go from there. Um, all right, so, um, our next item is executive session. And, um, so we have an executive session to discuss pending litigation. Um, I have a motion for that. Um, the, um, I move pursuant to section eighty-four dash one four one zero of the reissue of the revised statutes known as the Nebraska Public Meetings Law that the board hold a closed session with Phil Kelly, uh, Jason Ocean, Lisa Rhine. Uh, Heather's not here, I don't think, so, um. And obviously the commissioners for the purpose of discussion of pending litigation. I further move that this closed session is clearly necessary for the protection of the public interest and that the executive session for pending litigation matters is clearly authorized by the Nebraska Public Meetings Law. So that's the motion. Do I need to say anything else?
Do you have a stock up?
Yeah, we need. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote.
Do you want us to just clear the room or what? Are you at my office?
Let's just go to the office.
I think we oughta go to Lisa's office. All right, so we can, uh, vote?
You have four yeses.
All right, so the motion's carried and you can show us going into executive session at seven twelve.
We had, we had three yeses.
So you have Jason's email address?
I do.
Don't need to send it to me anymore?
I included both of you last time.
Okay. Perfect.
I'll miss you.
Thank you.
Hold your kisses, goodbye.
Yeah.
Or not.
All right. Beauty casual, we'll still see you around.
Yes, you will.
Yeah.
Are you leaving us, Phil?
It's my last meeting.
Last meeting.
Last meeting.
Why don't you just come and sit in and listen for three?
Oh, you know. I could watch, I don't know how many United States, uh, city council meetings. But we appreciate, we appreciate the opportunity.
If you wanna sit and listen for three, we won't charge you anything.
Oh, no, I could watch, I could just wait until it's, uh.
Yeah.
You did, this ain't the same when you're not.
People watch, people, when you can watch a Hallmark movie, same thing.
I didn't.
Are you still gonna, are you still gonna do some little programming?
You said.
I am trying to.
Yeah.
Sheriff, you weren't here. I wasn't here.
Close off everything I have.
You mean you weren't here when we went around the room?
Stop.
Oh, sorry. You know, I really can't hardly see. Yeah, it's true. Yeah. How many just one or?
What's Charlie?
I went back in the Lisa's office.
Charlie? No, I, I. And he, and you should hire a firm for persons.
For what?
Uh, why would you?
Oh, all persons.
Because you're, you hired by champagne, I did hire this, so we have a contract.
Here's this, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you. Give me a minute, give me just a minute.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
So we're back in regular session.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Here.
Rising?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Any other items?
Are you guys recessing to your detention center tour?
We are recessing to the detention center tour and I'll let you know.
Okay. Very good.
I'll text you when it's, when it's over.
Thank you.
All right, we're recessed.
Recessed.
Now, I wanted to show you your pageant.